All right, good evening. The August 12th meeting of the Nixa City Council will now come to order. Mrs. Coffey, roll call please.
Kelly Morris.
Here.
Shawn Lucas.
Here.
Aaron Peterson.
Here.
Darlene Graham.
Here.
Zern Best.
Here.
Please join me in the presentation of our colors.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Commander Gertis for presenting the colors. It was posted on social media, but since our meeting didn't happen on 12th, we wanted to go ahead and get it posted, but then go ahead and read this tonight. Whereas the city of Nixa proudly supports its military and veteran citizens, whereas the contributions and sacrifices of men and women from Nixa who served in harm's way in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedom and way of life enjoyed by our citizens, and whereas the Purple Heart is the oldest military decoration in use today, it evolved from the Badge of Military Merit created by General George Washington in 1782, and whereas the Purple Heart is awarded to members of the United States Armed Forces that have been wounded or killed in combat with a declared enemy of the United States of America, and whereas the city of Nixa appreciates the sacrifices of Purple Heart recipients have made in defending our freedoms and believe it is important that we acknowledge them for their courage and show them the support that they have earned, and whereas we celebrate our freedom, we should be mindful that this is a gift given to each of us by the men and women who bravely served and continue to serve our country and the ultimate sacrifices they have made on our behalf. And whereas the city of Nixa encourages all residents to recognize and commend all active military men and women, veterans, and fallen military heroes, especially those who have gallantly earned a Purple Heart in the name of freedom. Now therefore, I Jared Giddens, Mayor of the city of Nixa, do hereby proclaim the month of August 2025 as Purple Heart Month. So next up, we have a presentation by Commander Nick Gertis with the American Legion Post 434.
Thank you Mayor for inviting us out in support of all Legion, or all veterans and all of our Legion members. I just wanted to say it's always an honor to be able to speak in front of you and honestly all of Nixa. Today we come together to recognize Purple Heart Day, a solemn and meaningful observation of our nation's calendar. On this day, we pause to honor the brave men and women who have been wounded or killed in service to our country while serving in the US military. The Purple Heart is not just a medal, it's a symbol of sacrifice, courage, and resilience. The Purple Heart is the oldest military decoration still awarded to members of the United States Armed Forces. Its origins date back to August 7th, 1782, when General George Washington established the Badge of Military Merit during the Revolutionary War. At the time, this award was intended to recognize soldiers for any singular meritorious action. Only a few were awarded, and after the Revolutionary War, the badge fell into disuse. Fast forward to 1932, on the 200th anniversary of George Washington's birth, the military revived the idea. The modern Purple Heart was officially created by General Douglas MacArthur, who was the Army Chief of Staff. The design featured a profile of George Washington and retained the purple and gold color scheme of the original Badge of Military Merit. Initially, the Purple Heart was awarded only to Army personnel for wounds received in combat. In 1942, President Franklin D. Roosevelt extended eligibility to members of all branches of the US military and made it retroactive to April 5th, 1917, covering service in World War I. The criteria has evolved over time, but the Purple Heart is now awarded to any service member who has been wounded or killed by enemy action. This includes wounds caused by gunfire, explosions, or other direct engagements with enemy forces, and more recently injuries from terrorist attacks or friendly fire during combat operations. The medal itself is deeply symbolic. It is heart-shaped, colored purple to represent courage and sacrifice, and bears the image of George Washington to honor the decoration's founding father. The ribbon is purple with white edges echoing the original design from 1782. As of today, over 1.8 million Purple Hearts have been awarded. Each one represents a profound act of service and sacrifice, a permanent reminder that freedom has a cost. A cost born not just by the recipients, but by their families, the communities, and this nation as a whole. When we talk about veterans, we are not just speaking about history books or parades, we are talking about people, real people, who put their lives on hold and their lives at risk protect ours. Veterans are neighbors, our teachers, our coworkers, and our family. They are quiet heroes who carry with them the stories of battles fought, brothers and sisters lost, and values defended. Purple Heart recipients in particular remind us that freedom is not free. Every scar, every injury, every memory of pain or trauma is part of a price that has been paid, not for personal gain, but for the ideals we hold dear: liberty, justice, and peace. But honoring them goes beyond medals or speeches. It means supporting them when they come home, it means ensuring they have access to proper healthcare, education, housing, and job opportunities. It means listening to their stories, recognizing their struggles, and never taking their sacrifices for granted. Purple Heart Day is not just about reflection, it's a call to action, a call to a nation worthy of the sacrifice of our veterans have made, a call to stand by as they stood and still stand for us. So today, let us remember those who have given their blood, their strength, and their lives to the service of this country. Let us honor their courage not just in words, but in deeds. And let us promise to never forget the freedoms we enjoy each day were brought, were bought with a price, a price paid by our veterans. To all those who have served, and especially to those who have earned the Purple Heart, we thank you, we honor you, and we will never forget you. God bless our veterans and God bless the United States of America. Thank you.
Thank you very much Commander, and not just for today, for everything you do. You do a lot around here. I think we see it about everything, which is great, and you continue to do great things, not only for the Legion, but for the city as well, so we appreciate you. All right. So that was the fun part of our meeting. Those are always the best times when we get to do, you know, honor people, service awards, whatever it may be. And so before we begin our formal proceedings, I just want to take a moment to review some of our meeting guidelines to ensure that we conduct city business efficiently and respectfully. Tonight's meeting will follow our standard rules of order. During our formal discussions and deliberations, we ask audience members refrain from applause, verbal expressions of approval or disapproval, or other demonstrations. This helps us maintain order and ensures every council member and citizen can be heard clearly. We absolutely value your input and engagement as citizens of Nixa, and during our designated public comment periods, you'll have the opportunity to address the council directly. When speaking, please approach the podium and state your name for the record, and limit your comments to the time allotted, which is five minutes. And we ask that all remarks be directed through the chair, which is me, rather than directly to individual staff members or council members. This keeps our discussion orderly and on track. Your participation in local government is very important to us. It's great to see this many people here. You'd be amazed at how many meetings there'll be one person sitting there, and it's a little disheartening to have to make a decision for the entire city with feedback from one person. One of the reasons that this is important to us is, and actually the previous mayor is here right now, we've watched people muster up the courage to get up and speak, hated public speaking, didn't want to get in front of people, and you could tell, their hands were shaking, actually the whole podium was shaking and the microphone. And they did everything they could, they finally got the words together, and they say what they wanted to say, spoke their voice, and then they were booed at, just because their voice didn't align with someone else's, and that's disappointing. So that won't happen in here. Everyone will have a chance to talk, and we will listen, doesn't matter if it's until midnight, we've done that before. So with that being said, we will move on with tonight's agenda. First up will be our visitor section, so if anyone would like to speak on something that is not currently on the agenda, you can do so at this time. Mrs. Coffey, do we have anyone signed up?
Brian Cubic.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, fellow citizens of Nixa. My name's Brian Cubic. I've lived in Nixa since 2007. I'm a veteran in the United States Army. My father has a Purple Heart, and I do appreciate the honor that you've given us this month, I've served in four deployments overseas in support of a global war on terrorism. I've seen what happens when societies fail and devolve. I've stood in worn-torn cities guarding against riots sparked by utility companies that shot power off to entire communities without compassion for those struggling to survive. While Nixa is far from a war zone, the principle and the reason why I am here is the same. When a public utility loses sight of its obligation to serve the people and instead operates with a profit-first, people-last mindset, the damage to the community trust is real and dangerous. I'm not here tonight representing the military, I'm here representing our community and what I see as troubling. Disconnections are increasing at alarming rates. Penalties and fees are generating significant revenue disproportionate from those least able to pay, even with the use of smart meters. Grace periods are minimal and out of step with best practices across Missouri. In April of '25 this year, Nixa Utilities disconnected 133 households in a single month, more than triple the previous record for any month between 2022 and 2024. So far, from January through July of '25, there have already been 469 disconnections, surpassing the total number from 2023. What you have before you is kind of a handout of kind of a proposal. I know that Nixa Municipal Code is very concrete. I feel it's a little unforgiving, but I would like something in writing, I'd like you to enact something in writing protecting our most vulnerable citizens, our medically challenged households, like my neighbor has cancer, and my neighbor across the street has had just had a heart attack. I would hate to see what would happen if their power was disconnected during the hot summer heat. Missouri does have the hot weather rule. Municipalities aren't necessarily required to abide by that rule, but I would like to see that change. I respectfully request that this council pass a resolution requiring a minimum 15-day disconnect grace period, which is currently set at 10. Hold a public hearing with Nixa Utilities leadership to review shut-off procedures. Commission an independent audit of Nixa Utilities fee structure and shut-off data, and establish a citizen oversight board to monitor utility ethics and policies. In conclusion, city-owned utilities exist to serve the people, not to punish them. When a monopoly can shut off essential services with little notice and generate massive revenue from penalties, it's the duty of our elected officials to step in and protect the public. I urge you to take action today so that Nixa remains a city of fairness, compassion, and accountability. Thank you for your time and your attention and your service to this community. God bless America.
Thank you, Mr. Cubic. It's nice to finally meet you.
Yeah.
Talked to you a lot via email. I will tell you that after our last conversation, I did, I believe Mrs. Robbins and I spoke, and we are looking into what we can change and making something a little more concrete as far, especially on the automatic withdrawals and moving, giving people more chances than to just go to cash only after a couple deals, and so we are looking at all of that. I'd have to, I can't remember, we updated our policy a while back on shut-offs and all of that, so I would have to defer to you guys if you know those off the top of your head. But it's definitely something that we'll continue to look at. I'll be completely honest with you, we're about to move utility billing over here, so everyone's a little crazy right now. But I will continue to work with them, and I'll stay in touch with you.
I appreciate that, sir.
Actually have your email pulled up right here, so.
All right, sounds good.
Yeah, and thanks for coming and talking. Yes?
Yeah. I would feel more comfortable if that was in writing.
For sure. And we definitely, I know there's a lot of times we do make exceptions on people calling in that might be on oxygen or any other health-related things, and that's the thing, as long as people call in and work with us, we'll work with them. There's no doubt about that. So, but we'll stay on it, and I'll keep in touch.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thanks for showing up.
Thanks.
Brian Steele.
Still not the fun part when I come up and talk? That's not.
Oh, okay. I was actually going to have them lower your time to two minutes, but.
My name's Brian Steele, I'm speaking on behalf of the Nixa Downtown Revitalization Committee as their treasurer. We also have our president, Eric Albers, and Brandy Bealy, one of our board members here tonight. We wanted to speak to you tonight, first we want to start by thanking the council and the staff for all the support they have given to the downtown, and then we will put the proverbial "but." We wanted to speak to you tonight about some of the concerns that we have about downtown and about some of the things that have occurred over the last several years. I talked to Becca and got a list of things that have been approved for downtown but were never implemented. So for four years, we had budgeted the downtown design plan, which was never implemented. We also had in the 2025 budget, we had $10,000 for professional fees for the downtown district zoning, which was also, I think has been canceled this year. We also had a, in 2021 to 2024, there was funding provided for wayfinding signs for the city, which were never completed as well. So we wanted to come and speak about all of those, along with our parking concerns that we have in the downtown. So with the last paving, the downtown crosswalk, which is used by the elderly, handicapped people to be able to access restaurants and stores along Main Street in the downtown, was paved over, and so there is currently no crosswalk or safe way to cross without going all the way down from the city parking lot to 14 and Main to cross the street. So we wanted to bring that up and see about getting that resolved again. Also, about ADA compliance, there's people have to get out of their wheelchairs to be able to get up to go to the new social restaurant downtown that everyone's enjoying. And along with that, the parking lot, which we've owned for almost a decade, is a gravel lot, which is against city code. You can't have, no one else could have a gravel lot except for the city. So these are all things we'd like to see the city investigate and look into to help support downtown. One of the keys is going to be the downtown zoning district. With the demolition of the JAG building down there, there's a great opportunity to build something new, to bring in new economic development to downtown, but there's nothing you could build that would comply to city code in that location. So being able to have an overlay zoning district for the downtown would allow several businesses that are there currently or would like to move in there to be able to support that. I went through the comprehensive plan, the 2045 comprehensive plan, and downtown was mentioned 285 times in that plan. So I think that's something that the city has shown that is something that they want to invest in, something they want to have made better to help with economic development, with our social interaction, for all the events that we have down there, and to be able to continue to grow and improve the downtown. So we just wanted to bring that up, and hopefully as you get into your budget cycle coming up, you'd be able to budget for some of those events that have already been budgeted for year after year after year and never accomplished for 2026, and the downtown revitalization committee is always happy to assist in any of the zoning and any of the other issues that you might have. And I would take any questions you might have.
Any questions? I will say, because I had a lot to do with a lot of that, so the first step was on the zoning overlay, we wanted to get the comprehensive plan done first, so that was accomplished. Then we had it budgeted for the zoning overlay. The guy who was at SEMCOG, at SEMCOG, who that was going to do it, got hired by Ozark as an employee, so they couldn't do it anymore. It is actually in the budget for this year, SEMCOG has a person, they say they're going to get it done before the end of the year. So then that would bring us to the next point of creating a downtown master plan. I pulled the master plan from the budget because we wanted to get. I pulled the master plan from the budget because we wanted to get the comprehensive plan and the zoning overlay done first. So I would assume, once we get into budgeting, the downtown master plan will get budgeted for next year. We actually just talked about the parking lot the other day, because if you remember, we had a lot of cool ideas of what we could do for it, and Jimmy and I discussed it the other day, and we were like, we just need parking. So we could add some of those, once we have additional funds, to do some of the additional things that we wanted to do, like cover to where Suckers Day doesn't have to have a canopy and all that. Something we could eventually do once the money's there, but I will definitely keep you guys updated on the zoning overlay. I don't know if we have a time for that, do you?
We are partnering with Southwest Missouri Council of Governments to do the zoning district for downtown. I talked to Jason Ray, or got an email from him Monday night. He was supposed to have a board meeting today where they were approving a new rate structure or rate fees. Once that was approved, he was going to forward that to me so we can get it to our legal department to finalize the contract and then, and get it going.
Okay. And while they're here, the update on the engineer going out and looking at the buildings so we can remove all the tape and everything from the sidewalks? Oh. Awesome. Sidewalk, it's all you.
So there is safety concerns with that north building, or the building to the north of the building that got demolished. After the demolition of the building, it looked like the facade was starting to bow out a little bit, so there were safety concerns there. The property owner has made some improvements to that facade, but we have not had our structural engineer out to look at it yet, so until we have our structural engineer look at it, it's best to keep that portion blocked off for the safety of the people passing by.
My understanding, he was on vacation, and that's why he didn't?
That's my understanding as well.
If you could get ahold of him and let me know, that'd be great, and I'll get that to you guys. Thank you very much. All right. We have, nobody else signed up for this visitor's section. If anyone would like to speak about anything that is not on the agenda, feel free to do so at this time. If not, I will now declare the visitors' public hearing closed. Next up is the first reading of ordinances. Mrs. Coffey, could you please read Council Bill 2025-24?
First reading Council Bill number 2025-24, an ordinance of the Council of the City of NIXA establishing and levying taxes on real property in the city for the 2025 tax year. Mayor and Council, this is our annual ordinance to set the real estate tax levy for the year. If approved at the next council meeting, all of the required documents will be sent to the Christian County Clerk's Office. I want to note that the levy amount that is shown in the memo in the bill is incorrect. We received the pro forma from the State Auditor's Office after we posted the agenda. So the new rate will be 0.2886. The council bill and the memo will be updated.
It is a beautiful day, isn't it?
The council bill and the memo will be updated for the next meeting to reflect the correct tax levy. Staff does recommend approval.
Any questions for Mrs. Coffey? Thank you, ma'am. No further questions. I will now declare the public hearing open for Council Bill 2025-24. So if anyone would like to speak on this, do so at this time. I will now declare the public hearing closed. Any further comments or questions from council? Thank you. All right. Next up, Mrs. Coffey, could you please read Council Bill 2025-25?
First reading Council Bill number 2025-25, an ordinance of the Council of the City of NIXA granting a special use permit 2025-001 to authorize the uses of a bar with restaurant and a restaurant with drive-through in the neighborhood commercial zone property located at the southeast corner of the intersection of Tracker Road and Old Castle Road, presenting is Planning and Development Director Scott Gabby.
Mayor and Council, good evening, sir. I'm going to adjust this a little bit. Apparently, us tall guys are getting our heads cut off in the camera shot tonight. So before you is a special use permit request. Specifically, they are requesting for two land uses that according to our table of approved uses require a special use permit in order to operate a neighborhood commercial zoning district, specifically a bar with restaurant and then also a restaurant with a drive-through. So these are two aspects of a potential development that could be occurring up in the northeast part of town in the Wicklow subdivisions. Summer, if you can put the PowerPoint up. So to give you some background, as it may be kind of odd that there is a commercial zone piece of property in the middle of a residential subdivision, this was the original Wicklow concept from 2003. The develop, original developer originally had 27 acres of neighborhood commercial pieces or acres in this area. As you can see, as potential development, or as development occurred, the layout of the streets and everything has changed quite a bit. Ashford, you'll notice, is quite different than the original concept. Even Inniscary is quite different. The reason why there is neighborhood commercial zone property at this intersection of Old Castle and Tracker Road is our comprehensive plan at that time required the preservation of property at the intersection of two major roads to be preserved for commercial activity. So this is a good representation of what our comp plan called for. So again, this was 2003, 27 acres of neighborhood commercial. Dang it. Summer, can you click forward?
By the way, as development has occurred, we are now down to just this one three-acre parcel, there we go, that is in and amongst the single-family and the high-density multifamily that is in this area. So that's the history of the zoning, at least, for this piece of property. So in addition to the zoning, the street infrastructure was developed with, at the original time of 2003, which included a lot more intense land uses that required a lot more average daily trips to them. So since everything is kind of converted over to single-family residential, which doesn't require, or doesn't carry the same number of average daily trips with it, the roads were kind of overbuilt to kind of handle more traffic than what currently uses it. So the best way to describe it is that these roads were built originally, and then the subdivision's kind of grown into these roads, but there's still a lot more capacity that these roads could handle that is currently being underutilized since all the zoning changes as development has occurred. So to kind of go along with, since this land use or special use permit request allows staff to kind of look at the development based off the context in which it is being located, we have conditions of approval for you all to consider with this special use permit request. The first is, the use of generators is not allowed for food trucks or any other ancillary type uses. Since this is a new development, they should be able to provide electric hookups for every, all the potential land uses that could go there. The second is, the use of amplified sound on the property will cease at 9:00 PM, so they can still be outdoors in the outdoor patio area or beer garden, but the use of amplified sound will end at 9:00, and that is again because of the neighborhood in which it is being located in. Another topic, alcohol sales shall cease at 11:00 PM. Again, staff looked at similar situations in neighboring communities to kind of gauge how, you know, those businesses operate and how they interact with the neighborhood that they are located within. So these are based off of existing commercial businesses and that are in similar situations, so we're not just coming up with this stuff. Another thing, when it comes to the special use permit, we're able to add extra restrictions to it that, you know, if this were to be built as just a regular neighborhood commercial zoning property, we wouldn't be able to necessarily restrict it as much as we can with a special use permit. So for the first thing that's really unique about this is that the front yard setback. In neighborhood commercial zoning district, in our code, 15 feet is the front yard setback, so that would be from Old Castle and Tracker Road. So here's a couple of examples of some local businesses that have, that are, appear to be very close to the road, but they hit setbacks, so it just gives you a visual aid as to what it could potentially look like if it were developed under normal zoning code requirements. So we are proposing a 45-foot building setback, so tripling the minimum setback of the neighborhood commercial zoning district. This, we tried to kind of give you a visulate on this one, it's a little bit harder, but basically, it's a triple what would normally be allowed. In addition to that, we are also increasing the landscaping buffer yard along Old Castle and Tracker Road. Right now, in neighborhood commercial, it would only be 10 feet. We are increasing that to 15 feet. What this will accomplish will be adding more landscaping or plantings in this area to help visually obstruct the view of this development and also just to add greenery to the area. So again, another unique situation is freestanding signage. In the neighborhood commercial zoning district, you're allowed to go up to 21 feet, and it's allowed to be digital board, have backlit and illumination to it. Now, when you do go above six feet in height, the setback for the sign must equal the height of the sign. So if you have a 20-foot sign, it's supposed to be 20 feet back from the property line. We are proposing max height of six feet. So again, this is to match the character or the environment that it is located in, so most of our subdivision signs are typically no more than six feet in height. They are also not backlit. There's typically only have ground lighting showing what it is. So Castlewood is a good example of what we are aiming for, for this development. In addition, we are allowing the potential developer to decrease their minimum parking requirement. Right now, we require one space per four seats provided in the establishment. We are decreasing that to one per, one seat per every six seats provided in the establishment. This will allow the developer to potentially create a smaller parking lot, which will again have a less impact on the surrounding neighborhood. I think I hit the eight conditions. This was read in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission at their most recent annual meeting. Numerous citizens approached the commission to express their concerns with this development in the, in the environment that is proposed to be located in. In addition, staff received a lot of email feedback that we then also passed along to the commission, and we can make that available to you as well. With all things considered, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted four to two to not recommend approval to NIXA City Council. Staff does recommend approval, as this type of development gives staff a little more control to help this development fit into the neighborhood fabric and not be as, you know, as stand out as much as if it were to be developed under normal neighborhood commercial zoning district standards. So if you have any questions, staff is available.
I have some concerns about the parking. What would be the solution for overflow parking if they run out of parking spaces? Because you can't park on Tracker, can you?
No, you.
Or Old Castle.
Yeah, correct. Due to the classification of Old Castle on Tracker, you're not supposed to park along those roads. There is potential for satellite parking to be provided along with the apartment complex that is being constructed, or the developer could then also provide additional parking on their own property.
Yeah, I had some concerns about the parking too, because ultimately, if this place establishment has 60 seats, I don't know what the numbers that you're trying to have, let's say it's 60 seats, based off this number, that would only be 10 parking spots. With our other number, that would be, with using one and four, that gives more parking slots, so.
So as part of the staff report, you'll see a conceptual site plan that was provided by the architect. Again, it's just conceptual in nature, but as part of that, they were providing, based off their projected seating capacity, they were providing, I think, around 90 parking spaces. Doing rough calculations of four by four, you count how many parking spots they have, and there's roughly about 80 parking spots at four by four, which is in a much more visible area.
Mr. Gabby, was there any reasons given or anything that Planning and Zoning Commissioners said that staff had missed when doing their review of the special use permit that would have led to their four non-votes, their four votes in that were not favorable in this special use permit?
Not that I am aware of. The Planning and Zoning Commission did express concerns with the potential development not being in harmony within the area in which it's proposed to be located, but again, this is a commercial zone piece of property. It's currently zone commercial, so it's going to stand out a little bit regardless of how it develops.
Right. So there was, so they agreed that staff did their due diligence and didn't disagree with anything of your findings?
As far as I'm aware, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Gabby.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. If there are no other questions, I will now declare the public hearing open for Council Bill 2025-25.
Ann Kunkel.
So Mayor and Council, thank you for the opportunity to be able to comment on this proposal. My name's Ann Kunkel, and I live at 804 East Kingsmead Circle here in NIXA, which is at the Villas of Wicklow, which is just a couple of blocks down the street from this proposed area. We have one of the most wonderful communities that you could find anywhere in the United States there. We all feel like we're so blessed to have the opportunity to live here in NIXA and enjoy this fantastic community. We love, most of us have grandkids that live in one of the neighboring neighborhoods, and they go to NIXA School, which is one of the very best in the state, if not in the nation. And so we, we thank the part that you all have played in giving us this great community. But because we're, we love it so much, we do want to protect anything that might come in and disturb the great community that we have here. So most of our residents, we're all, almost all of us are senior citizens in that community, and very, a lot of our neighbors walk those sidewalks, right down Old Castle, down Tracker Road, would be walking right past this area. There's also a lot of family homes in this area, and so we see a lot of kids riding their bikes down the street and walking past this area as well. The Village of Wicklow has their swimming pool, two swimming pools, within a block of here. So then, in the summertime, we have all kinds of kids walking, sometimes without a parent with them, you know, when they're old enough to do that. And so, we really feel for their safety and want to maintain the safety for the children in this area. And the NIXA school bus stops right there on the circle, right there by Tracker Road and Old Castle, and with one of their school bus stops every day. And we really question, you know, we're fine with a restaurant, you know, or a coffee house, something like that, but do we? a coffee house, something like that, but do we really need a bar right there? And is that really gonna add value to the great community that we have? There is a new, the four by four is on CC Highway, just two miles from there, and if you drive by in the evening, it's very populated. In fact, many evenings, you will see that they, their parking lot is completely full, and it flows over to the Southern Bank parking lot, and even to the church parking lot, because they have so many cars there. So we're concerned about the parking, if there's a bar in that area. We also feel like we want to maintain, you know, if you drive by Old Castle, I don't know where you're going to find a more beautiful street anywhere. So we really want to keep our beautiful street. So the new apartments that are going in, that I believe it's two hundred and forty units that are going to go in, and our understanding is they are going to build and keep that area consistent with what is already there to a certain extent. I think it's going to be another beautiful place, but there's already going to be two hundred and forty additional families using Tracker Road and Old Castle Road. So that's a lot of additional traffic. And if you go all the way old, down Old Castle Road, just a couple of years ago, they had to put in a little, I don't know what you call it, but it's to slow the traffic down because the traffic was going too fast. So, you know, as being senior citizens, we're concerned about our grandkids, you know, driving their bikes down that road, just a lot of concern about things like that. We're wondering, you know, maybe our community would be better off having a daycare put there to help the working, you know, when both parents are working. That would be a great asset to our community, or an ice cream shop that the kids could stop at after school, or, you know, on the way to the pool, or something like that. We just feel like there's something besides a bar that would be a greater asset to where we're living and to keep this great standard of living that we all have. And so we're just asking you to consider that. And thank you for giving us the wonderful community that we have.
Thank you for taking the time to come up and speak. Anne, it's called a chicane, a chicane. I actually learned that whenever I got up here. So the speed calming device is a chicane, so. And we were actually, it's been a while, after we installed the chicane, we put the radar out there, and the numbers had dropped a lot, and we actually discussed today getting those back out there, and possibly a couple other things, so. Because speeding is a problem everywhere.
It is, but, you know, we couldn't ask for a better place to live, and we just want to keep it where it's at. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. So like I said at the beginning, whether you're for or against it, part of our rules of order, there are no clapping, no booing, no, we just listen to each other. Thank you.
Mayor, can I provide additional information?
Yeah.
I forgot to mention the addition of sidewalk and the appropriate crosswalks to get to this facility. A condition of approval will be to add sidewalk, the length of their road frontage, and then the, the appropriate crosswalks to get to it. I just forgot to mention that during the presentation.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Alan Wright, 927 East Thorndale. And I don't disagree with anything I've heard so far, so I won't repeat it. The thing that I'm more concerned about is the noise. Thinking about being surrounded on three sides with residents, and this commercial is, is not very far from the, literally, the bedrooms of small children. So it's, it's just, I, I don't know what the noise ordinance will be, and maybe you can educate us on that, but the noise would be my major concern in addition to what has already been spoken. So that's it.
I do believe on this special use permit, there was to be no noise after nine, and that is, Mr. Gabby, is that six days a week, seven days a week?
Every day of the week.
Every day?
Correct.
Okay. I will say, one of the, one of the benefits of that is you can lose your special, special use permit. If you were going against the guidelines, it can be taken away just as easy as it was given. So it does, you know, he was talking about the, the changes of a special use permit versus what would already be allowed there, and that would be one of them, is if they went against that and continued to annoy neighbors and have loud music and things like that, that could be pulled pretty quick. And if they don't have a permit, they can't do business, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lynda White.
My name is Lynda White, my husband is Rick White. We reside at 878 East Galloway Court in Estates of Enniscarry, alongside the Wicklow Villas and the Castlewood Senior Living, all a part of the great Wicklow subdivision. Last week, during the Planning and Zoning Meeting, a special use permit for the bar, which would also manufacture beer at the corner of Tracker Road and Old Castle, was proposed, discussed, and ultimately denied. We are here tonight to thank the Planning and Zoning Commission to their decision and strongly urge the city council to agree on the denial. Although the property is zoned Neighborhood Commercial, a bar or taproom requires a special use permit. That means the city must decide whether the use is truly compatible with the surrounding area in the case it is clearly not. First, let's talk about the noise and the disruption. Homes directly back up to this site, including families with young children. Elementary-aged children typically go to bed at 8:00 PM, and late-night activity from customers leaving outdoor music, or food trucks, which you've denied on that, will disrupt their routines. Even after closing time, employees and patrons lingering outside, talking, laughing, smoking, will keep noise going well past the hours of authorization. Residents who enjoy peaceful evenings on their patios will lose the quiet that drew them to the community in the first place. The building design makes the worse, makes this worse. The sketch shows all the outdoor activities in the front of the building, which corners Tracker Road and Old Castle Road, putting them even closer to residential homes, even with the forty-five-foot setback. Even if those activities were moved behind the building, it wouldn't solve the problem. This is still a bar with beer manufacturing in the middle of a high-density family neighborhood. Relocating the noise is not the solution. Not putting the bar here is the solution. We also need to consider traffic and safety. This corner already has steady neighborhood traffic. Adding a bar and brewery will increase both vehicle and pedestrian movement, raising safety risks for children, seniors, and those walking and biking nearby. This location is also directly along the route where school buses drop off students who walk home. Every day, they would pass an establishment where alcohol is being served. That is not the example or the environment we want for our children. Parking will be another major problem. From other breweries and bars, we know that the parking overspills into surrounding streets. Here, parking is not allowed on Old Castle and Tracker Road. The only way to enforce that would be for residents to call in. That is not our responsibility. Lighting outdoor activities and food trucks will also create ongoing disturbances. Outdoor lighting will shine into nearby homes, and outside events will draw more noise, traffic, and activity late in the evening. Another concern is property values. A bar and a brewery in the heart of a residential neighborhood will make our area less desirable to home buyers. Fewer buyers will be willing to pay the price that we need for our homes when we decide to move, late-night drinking, in a late-night drinking atmosphere. Another concern is proper, I'm sorry. There are also odors from beer manufacturing that many don't think about. Brewing produces strong smells. Do we want these lingering in the air while we're sitting on our patios, playing with our children outside? Finally, we believe environmental concerns must be addressed before any decision is made. Beer manufacturing generates wastewater that can, can contain high levels of organic material, cleaning chemicals, and residual yeast. If this facility connects directly into the Nixa Public Sewer System without a proper pretreatment, it could strain infrastructure and require costly improvements, ultimately fall on the taxpayers. For that reason, we respectfully request that the city require an environmental impact study before they consider their approval. We are not anti-business. We simply believe the property should be developed in a way that supports the community, not disrupts it. The Planning and Zoning Commission recognized this when they denied the permit. We respectfully ask the council to uphold that denial. Noise, safety, parking, lighting, property values, odors, environmental impact, these are not small inconveniences. They would be permanent changes to our daily lives. Thank you for your time, and thank you for supporting the residents.
Thank you very much. Mrs. White.
My name is Jeremy Young, 1401 North Wexford Way. I live directly across the street from the property in consideration. I am literally the closest property to the lot being discussed. I've lived with my wife and children in Wicklow for eleven years, three of them in this current house directly across from this property. I'm here tonight not just as a property owner, but as a father of these kids and someone who values the safety and peace and the financial stability of our neighborhood. This is a residential corner. It is surrounded by residences, single-family homes, and soon apartments. It's not a business corridor. This is an area where children ride, ride bikes, people walk dogs, runners, including myself, run these roads, families spend time outside. A quiet, peaceful neighborhood is one of the reasons that we chose to live here. Another is the demand for the neighborhood, and thus steady increasing property values. Both of those reasons would be negatively impacted if this goes through. The proposed bar would bring with it loud outdoor music, food trucks, significant vehicle, golf cart traffic, all of it directly across from the street from where my children have their bedrooms, where they sleep. When I say loud, it's not just faint sound in the background. They have outdoor music amplified through speakers. It doesn't stop at property lines. That carries into my home, my children's bedrooms. I am concerned what this means for my family. I imagine what it would be like when dozens of people are leaving at the same time, late at night, possibly after having one too many, doors slamming, engine starting, tires squealing, music still loud. It's not an inconvenience, it impacts my family. This is not just about my family, it's about everyone who lives here. Our streets are not designed for heavy traffic or large gatherings. I know we said things were a long time ago, if they were, then we probably wouldn't have a roundabout there in the chicane that we do. Things change, so we've added those things, so I'd like to say it's not always the same as twenty, two thousand and three. Parking estimates for this project are grossly unrealistic. There's overflow of cars down the road at four by four, cars along the streets, filling up the bank parking lot, et cetera. People will drive to this, they won't walk. All the surrounding homes are inside fences. I'm right across from this place, but I can't get there by walking across the street. I have to walk outside of a fence and then back down. That's great in April and October, but if it's ninety degrees today, I'm not walking there. There will be cars and golf carts parked everywhere on the side roads, whether they're supposed to or not. It doesn't matter if we tell them they're not supposed to, if there's no parking signs, they will still park. People are already going to be in their cars driving there. Go to four by four or fourteen mil market, they're two miles away. We are not lacking nearby places to consume alcohol. After the meeting here last week, we drove down Tracker to go home, and there are three cars parked in the grass on the side of the road at the Copperleaf Development to go fishing at eight o'clock at night. They're not supposed to park there, but it didn't stop them. To think this would not happen along Tracker or Old Castle is just naive. That means they're going to spill into the grass lanes along the side of the road, into our neighborhoods, driveways, sidewalks, et cetera, where people run, walk, my kids ride scooters. That does not even take into account the fact of any impairment, which would obviously happen from time to time. This is not an extension of a business district, this would be an island of nightlife activity dropped in the middle of a residential neighborhood. The nearest commercial area is a mile away. There's a reason bars are typically placed in designated entertainment zones, not, they're built to handle the noise, lighting, and parking. This corner is not that. If anyone thinks that this is a better option than the alternative, and worried about what could go in there, smoke shop, a tattoo parlor, or whatnot, let's use critical thinking here and think, one, that can already go in with or without this vote, they don't need our permission. Two, there's already a commercial building available on Tracker in Maine, next to numerous apartments. It would make much more sense for someone to build, to already go into an existing building. Let's not make decisions on what we're afraid of that are unrealistic. If this were to go through, operating hours must be limited. I would urge you to consider ending outdoor music at eight o'clock on weekends, and alcohol sales at eight o'clock on weekdays, and no later than ten o'clock on weekends. Anything beyond that would be incompatible with the character of the neighborhood. If this does move forward, you have to mirror the proposed layout and put all the stuff at the back instead of at the front. Put the loudest, most incon, this current proposal is putting the loudest, most inconvenient part of this next to the people who have invested in this community, as opposed to potential apartments in the south who have no long commit, commitment to this community, pay no property taxes. New businesses can be valuable to a city, and I support responsible growth, but a bar in the middle of homes with no commercial support nearby is not responsible. It is a recipe for ongoing conflict between the businesses and the residents who live in the city. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Young.
Bob Stovall.
Good evening, I'm Bob Stovall. Appreciate this part of the meeting and the fun part too, seriously. I've not met Jeremy Young, but he and I both share that corner. We're equally as close, give or take a few feet. I feel like even with the, I'm sorry, Bob Stovall, 904 East Clare Court, Nixa. Even with the forty-five-foot setback, I feel like we're probably, our back deck is a hundred and fifty feet, give or take a few feet from, from the building, the building itself, and so. When Lisa and I, my wife, purchased the property, we knew there was commercial zoning on the We thought property might be a professional office, some other uses have been mentioned, it might be more of an eight-to-five building. Might be a quieter neighbor. I don't want to duplicate all the concerns, but we agree with all the others. Planning and zoning discussing of, last week brought us concern about the outdoor entertainment, the music, the alcohol sales, the timelines for that, as well as the, the outdoor music. This morning, my wife went out and on our back deck and overheard a one-on-one conversation from the property between two of the construction people that are working on the adjacent apartments, and just a one-on-one conversation, she could hear that from our back deck. You know, when you magnify that by a number of people talking with the music and support of the alcohol, it could just get loud in the evenings. I also agree with the parking. I appreciate the effort, but the smaller lot's going to squeeze the parking out into the street, and, and that's going to be a reality too. We're in opposition to what's being proposed. We feel it will diminish what we had expected to be our investment and also the, the community that we live in. I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Stovall.
Beth Polisca.
Good evening, I'm Shorter. My name's Beth Polisca, and my husband and George, George and I live at 870 Kenmare Court in the Villages of Wicklow, Enniscarry. We probably, other than Jeremy and the other speaker, are the next closest home to this space. We've lived here for eleven years, and because of more square footage, we relocated to Enniscarry, and love it. I want to point out a, a clear delineation, and I think differentiation, because sometimes we hear the comparison to four by four, or chess- we hear the comparison to four-by-four or Chesterfield, things like that. And there's some clear differences. This commercially zoned area now, when it was 27 acres, different story. But today, at three acres, there is no buffer zone in place between the establishment and the residence. And that's different. If you look at places like four-by-four, Fremont Hills and their bedrooms and their homes, there are huge buffer zones of things like significant green space, water drain, the retention area around that. Access is off of a main road, not the residential roads. And if you're truly going to compare to something like a four-by-four, what we really need to do is look at four-by-four in the center of Fremont Hills. That's what we're talking about. It's not at the edge, it's not off of a main road, and that absence of a buffer zone in these three acres is the challenge. Many have mentioned, and I'll agree, with the noise pollution. Bars by their nature just generate noise, both from within inside the establishment and just people congregating outside. It's just the way that it is. Add, in addition to that, live bands and music being amplified, even till nine o'clock at night, and alcohol still being served to 11:00? That's a problem this deep inside of our subdivision. Late-night hours will disrupt the lives of residents. And I think it's important to remember, even with noise ordinances in place, enforcement is always reactive. It's not preventative. We still have to deal with the headaches of it. The late-night hours of operation will require brighter lighting just for security and parking law eliminations, and that is in conflict with soft residential lighting standards that currently define and characterize our neighborhood. Our streets and our homes were not designed to buffer this type of light exposure in our communities. Many have mentioned the parking and traffic. There's not enough parking spaces. This is open, this establishment, is open to everybody. And as we see often in places like a four-by-four, it brings folks in. If we can't park on Tracker and we can't park on Old Castle, there's nowhere else for it to go but into our neighborhoods and in front of our driveways and our streets. And that creates, that issue creates challenges for pedestrians and cyclists. We love this community, but this is a concern for all of us. Someone mentioned, and I'll just reiterate, the impact on property values. Studies have shown that too close of proximity, meaning we don't have this buffer zone of acreage, to nightlife venues negatively affect our property values. As homeowners, we've made the choice to invest in this community with some of, not going to say it's the most beautiful homes, but it's significantly beautiful to NIXA. And this is destroying that. Passing that special use permit with no available buffer zone acreage between this establishment and our homes is undermining of our trust in all of you. In closing, a bar might be appropriate in a true commercial district, but not this deep within our neighborhood. Our issue isn't what, the issue is where. I thought that one of our planning and zoning commissioners really summed it up best when stating, "This just makes no sense in the middle of a neighborhood this close to these homes." I agree wholeheartedly. I don't imagine we'd put four-by-four in the middle of Fremont Hills. I would kindly recommend to our city planners, whoever those folks are, that there needs to be a reevaluation of how you balance commercial zones if you're going to put them in the middle of a subdivision. My husband and I ask that you vote to support the overwhelming and clear decision by planning and zoning in a four-two vote and align with their decision. Any other decision by this council is to put homeowners on notice that NIXA is not a safe place for high-end homes that are custom as well and invest in our properties. It didn't make any sense to planning and zoning. It doesn't make sense to us as residents, and it really shouldn't make sense to our council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Polifka.
Joe Younger.
My name is Joe Younger. I've lived in the villages of Wicklow since 2007, 18 years next month. Far different than Manhattan, Kansas. Anyway, when we were looking at a place to reside when we moved down here, we went all around Springfield, Wild Horse, all kinds of developments, and zeroed in on NIXA. My house is catty-corner from the proposed environment, establishment. I live at 846 East Rush Court. My backyard is the Roundabout. I've got all those big trees, but they're not going to buffet all that sound, I know that. Anyway, when I'm looking out my living room window, or my bedroom window, or the patio, I'm in a direct line of sight to that proposed establishment, which means I'm in the line of sight for any kind of incident that might happen, to include a possible shooting, because we know their shootings occur in bars and taprooms. I've looked at the other subdivisions in our area. The newest one, Irish Hills and Columns and Springs, Copperleaf and Tiffany. I don't see any commercial anything of any sort in any of those, but yet you're zeroing in on Wicklow. You've heard of, and I've got the same things in my notes, too, about the traffic and speeders. Yeah, we still have speeders even with the Roundabout, because I can guarantee you, I can sit out on my patio on any given day and have a half a dozen of them. Soon as they come around the circle and they're going north on Old Castle, they're beating the band, and nobody's there to stop them. And it's -- I rest my case. But what I would suggest, instead of the bar, something more conducive to that neighborhood. A florist, a hair salon, even a laundromat like down the street on Tracker. Offices for insurance companies or investment companies. And the last thing I want to bring to your attention is the fact that, do you know that there are five bars already in NIXA and five in Ozark? That means we've got 10 bars within a three-mile radius. I don't know that we need an 11th one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Younger.
Good evening. My name is Billy Kimmons. I am one of the principal architects at Hoodrich Architecture, and I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the applicant for the special use permit. This is hard for me. I'm not used to being the minority, and I'm afraid I'm going to be walking out of here not being everyone's favorite person. But nonetheless, I want to try to share some facts with you tonight about what this is. So first of all, this is a neighborhood commercial zoning district. As you've heard from staff, it's something that's been supported by the comprehensive plan. There's a history here. It was once bigger. What I've been told is that the streets, Old Castle and Tracker, are secondary arterial roads that were designed at the time for a much larger development. And so the infrastructure is in place to support much more intense development than what's here now, which has been reduced to three acres. I want to be clear that this is not a request to rezone the property. This is neighborhood commercial, and it has been for quite some time. I would venture to guess probably much longer than many of these homes have been around. Let me focus on what are some of the permitted uses for neighborhood commercial. You've heard some of them tonight, but just let me give you an example, and these are not necessarily what are being proposed, but just some examples of permitted uses that would not require action from city council. So obviously, many business uses, professional offices, some of the ones mentioned tonight, bakeries, convenience stores with or without pump stations, mobile food truck parks, and then restaurants without drive-through services. Many of the concerns that have been raised tonight, the restaurant use is still a permitted use in the neighborhood commercial zoning. And so there's a lot of development that could happen on this lot without the special use. But let me mention some of the examples of special use permits that would be required. So obviously, bars with restaurant. That's the language in your code that's being used. I'm going to use terms like taproom and cideries, not to try to sugarcoat anything, but just to maybe paint a different picture. A lot of the stories being told tonight suggest that this is a bar that's going to be a nuisance, and that's absolutely not what this development is. It is a cidery. It's meant to be a small-scale development that is an amenity to a neighborhood like this. So a bar with restaurant is the primary reason why we're here, but another special use would be, example would be like a grocery store or restaurants with drive-through, and that's another reason that we're here for a special use, is to permit a drive-through for a restaurant. So let me explain a little bit about what this development is intended to be. The vision for this development is a mixed use. The plan is to support up to four tenants. Some of the tenants that have been discussed, the primary one being the cidery. That is the bar with restaurant that's requiring the special use permit. Other tenants that have been discussed as supporting to this would be a restaurant. A bakery has been discussed as an idea and a coffee shop, and I don't know a coffee shop that would not want a drive-through service for that morning commute coffee, and so that's why we're showing that and requesting that. One of the things that I want to make sure that I point out is that, and a lot of these ideas and concerns have been mentioned tonight, but we still have to follow the design standards that are set forth in the city code and ordinances. So many of the concerns, such as stormwater runoff, noise control, buffer yards, traffic concerns, these are all still design guidelines that we have to meet the city's requirements, and so we're not asking for exceptions to that. I've been a part of many city council meetings considering cases like this, and a lot of the concerns that you're hearing tonight are ones that I hear most common, where neighbors show up to say this is going to create problems for our neighborhood. These design standards must be met as part of the permit requirements, and so we will be doing that. And I do want to point out, too, that the reduction in parking was not a request by the developer. That was something that city staff listed as one of the conditions. Like I've mentioned, this is intended to be a neighborhood hub, something that is going to serve as a connection, as a connector for the neighbors, for the neighborhood. It's something that is meant to be place-making, that can be a desirable amenity to a community like this. I feel like this is very much a walkable location. Many of the residents live within a half a mile, which is a 15-minute walk to this location. And so I just want to end with this. I'm out of time. Approximately 50% of this development is a permitted use. The other 50% requires a special use permit. If the bar with restaurant was not an allowed use in the neighborhood zoning, in the neighborhood commercial zoning, then I feel like this should not be zoned neighborhood commercial, and I would just ask the council to consider what are the conditions that we've not agreed to that make this not a good fit. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions? All right. Thank you. Before we move on to the next one, I want to take about a 10, 15-minute break, let everyone stretch their legs, use the restroom, if you need. We'll be back here in about 10 to 15 minutes.
Whitney Gisong.
Mayor and Council, good evening. My name is Whitney Gisong. I'm the president of the Nixa Area Chamber of Commerce. And I think the last time that I come up here and talk to you guys about a development, I said the same words, which was, "I do not envy you your position," tonight. We've heard some very eloquent and well-thought-out argument from the community behind us, behind me, in front of you. I just wanted to just talk a little bit, though, outside. I don't live in that neighborhood, so I'm not going to speak to any of the things that were already spoken to. I just want to mention the importance of commercial development in our town. For whatever you choose to do with this, this corner is entirely up to you. I always get excited when I hear about commercial coming. As our community grows and as our residential grows, having our commercial lag behind really puts a strain, I think, on our city. Because that sales tax needs to be able to keep up with all the other needs and infrastructure and whatnot. So, really, today, when I was sitting down there, listening to everyone, I was like, "Oh." I came unprepared, because I was just coming excited, because I love to see commercial come in. Commercial benefits are our town specifically. Now, what you choose to do with the information that you've been given is entirely up to you, of course. And I'm not going to speak either direction, really, except for to say that I'm excited about the commercial potential of this corner. And I hope that you guys can make the appropriate decisions based on what's zoned there now, as well as balance that with the arguments you've heard today. Again, just one other thing, I know the difficult position that you're in, as we cannot walk out and pluck certain specific industries and stick them in certain specific spots. That is very hard to do. I wish we could do it, because we would all know what would be on every corner in Nixa. Well, I would have an In-N-Out in Nixa, but if you could bring that there... I don't even know if I'm allowed to talk. No, okay. But being able to just pluck a specific industry or a specific business and set it down exactly the way we want it is practically impossible. I do recognize the difficulty of that ask. So, we get excited when commercial comes to us. This place, this wants to be developed right now. And I think with a special use permit, you have the ability to control some of that, which is honestly kind of a great power that you're able to have. And so, I hope you wield it well. Good luck on your vote. Again, I hope that we can bring commercial to this area. Commercial is great for our town, which is growing, and the commercial, it's not quite keeping up. So when commercial wants to come and develop, that's very exciting for us, and it will benefit the greater Nixa community, for sure. I wanted to just lay that out there. I know that's not helpful to anybody, but good luck with what you're going to decide, not tonight, I don't think. But I felt like there should be a voice, or perhaps a second voice, in favor of the commercial development, which I do recognize also, that the residences up here are not anti-commercial. They've made that very clear. Been very eloquent in how they've laid out their arguments. So, I'm excited to see whatever goes there and whatever decision you guys make, the chamber will support it. So, thank you so much. And don't ask me questions, because I don't have any answers for you.
Thank you, Mrs. Gisong.
Janet Clark.
I'm Janet Clark, and I live at 1432 North Rockingham Avenue, right over just a slight ways from where this proposed establishment is. And I appreciate the mayor and the council hearing our arguments and really just our situation that we're dealing with. But a brewery in the middle of a subdivision where there really are 600 or 700 kids running around can never be a good idea. I am all for commercial as well, but I think you would have to agree that there's very few commercial businesses that could go in that three-acre tract that would bring 150 people into the subdivision that are drinking. And I drink, that's, you know, I'm not arguing that. I'm just saying, like with a restaurant, the average time in a restaurant might be, you know, 45 minutes to an hour, if you're, you know, if you have plenty of staff. And the individuals might have one drink. But it's a whole different premise when it's a brewery with outdoor space, music, and that sort of thing. That attracts a numerous amount of people. And they're in that space all at the same time. And I know that you have really no control over what businesses might go in, other than something that's special use. But I think there's very few businesses that could go in that would have, you know, 150 people there at once, with everyone drinking for probably a couple hours and socializing and being out in the open space and that sort of thing, and then trying to traverse out of that neighborhood. The kids, you know, the pool is open till nine o'clock, and many people will be probably vacating the bars around that time. And the kids in our neighborhood have really had it so good in that their parents, they can trust them to take their bike to the pool, take their scooter, whatever. And I really believe that all will stop when you have an establishment like that right in the center of where all these kids are living. And it's dangerous for the kids. There's, you know, many things that could happen. And I think we would all agree, after someone has had two or three drinks, their rationale may not be quite the same as someone that owns a bakery there, or, you know, whatever else might go in. And even if that would be like a 7-Eleven, or a gas station, or something like that, you're not going to have 150 people there at once that are drinking and getting out in the neighborhood and trying to park in the neighborhood and all that sort of thing. And I really believe that we have plenty of room for commercial space for, such as a bar on our outskirts. It was never, ever even contemplated that there would be a bar in the middle of our neighborhood. And it's not fair to the people that have invested in the property there, particularly in Iskary, a very high-end gated community that is going to have this literally right across the street and all of the others that's going to be in their backyard. It's, you know, that I would have never, in my wildest dream, I've been there since '07, have thought that it would even be entertaining to put something like that in the middle of a nice subdivision. It might be lucrative for taxes. I mean, it might be lucrative for the owners, but it really is ruining a community. And I think it does set a precedent. I don't think we have any other really nice neighborhoods in Nixa that have a bar right in the middle of them. And I just think it sets a bad, bad precedent. And I think it puts a lot of people at risk, and especially kids, that are used to just having free rein in that neighborhood. And, you know, that'll change, and their parents will have to change the way they handle things, too. So, probably more of a reiteration of what we've talked about. But I do think there's a lot to be said for that type of business and the numbers of people that that would attract at one time in a subdivision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Clark. And I'd love to have a drink with you sometime and hear what we can do better. You just give me a call.
Bart Greenwell.
Hello. My name is Bart Greenwell. I live at 858 East Edenmore Circle in Wicklow. Just a couple of quick things that, I don't want to rehash everything that's come up, but I'll just make a statement that if it wasn't for the fact that it is going to be horrifying, it might be entertaining to see how all these people who are drinking navigate the roundabout with pedestrians in there. So, that's my first point. Second point is, I have zero confidence in the city in honoring the noise ordinance for this establishment. History has shown me that you will not, if anyone asks for an exception to the noise ordinance, they'll grant it. And if this establishment wants to bring in a band or some local person to draw more customers in, and he requests an exception to the noise ordinance, history tells me that that'll be granted. That is all I have. Thank you for your time. Any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Roger Burke Bigler.
Hi, I'm Roger Burke Bigler. I live at 1415 North Ritzell Circle. Been here 10 years or so. Bought the lot originally when we came from O'Reilly Development. And my best recollection is that when we bought the lot, a gal named Julie sold us the lot, we were told that that corner probably was going to be light commercial up there. But that meant it was going to be office space. There was never a mention of a bar put in up there. It was going to be light commercial. We went with that, bought the lot, built the house, and now we live here, and now, you know, we might have this new obstacle put in our way. Second point I want to make is, they might be building it today. I think you have to look long-term. This might be built this year, next year, but who's to say in 15 years what that place will end up being? And I know already, there are a lot of expensive homes in there. So what's the impact going to be down the road? Who's going to run that place? What are they going to do with it? Are they going to take care of it or not? I don't think you know that answer. And I think that alone is enough to say, "No. Follow your recommendation and say no." And I guess my last point is, I came down here to sit down just at the last minute, so I appreciate you letting me get in. I'm probably the last one. I've not been down here before. But folks, common sense says, "It's a bar in the middle of a neighborhood." I don't care how fancy we talk about the setbacks, it's a bar. It's going to create problems in that neighborhood. That's my only point. Thanks. Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. So we do not have anyone else signed up. That does not mean that you can't. If you would still like to speak, you can come forward, do so. And as long as you could fill out a card, once you're done, is fine. That'd be great.
Thank you. Marceline Middleton. I live at 840 East Rush Court. And, you know, when Wicklow was laid out, there were three corners where the roundabout is now that was designated commercial. As they developed those phases, they went back to the city and downzoned those lots to be part of the homes and the layout. It's my understanding, and maybe you can correct me, but the developer tried to downzone this lot that we're talking about tonight, but the city wouldn't allow it.
If I remember correctly, the last time that this was even voted on was actually to shrink the northeast side and kind of shrunk a little bit of the southeast side, and it was approved. And that was all to make way for Inneskary. I believe that's the last time, as far as, since I've been involved.
As far as I remember, that was roughly about 2018. And, yeah, it was part of, Inneskary is what caused that northeast portion to be downzoned to single-family to allow for that. And then we additionally shrunk the southeast corner, which is where we're currently at, because they had a couple additional neighborhood commercial lots there. As part of the plating of Inneskary, it caused those neighborhood commercial lots to disappear and go to high-density multifamily. And then we're also, we're just left with this three-acre neighborhood commercial. That's the last time this has been in front of council, I believe.
And I believe that was approved unanimously on that one.
I believe so, yes.
I was new. I was one of my first ones, so.
Well, I just want to just say that some of the things that our people have brought up tonight of having a bar, and you can call it whatever you want, but it's still a place that sells liquor and alcohol, and it's going to be a problem on the roads, people going home and whatnot. But the sound and the lights will be a problem as well. And I just think that we do have a very nice community and neighborhood, and we are proud of it. And we don't want a sore eye in the middle of it. And we would really ask you to think carefully before you make a decision to approve something like this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Middleton.
Hi, I'm Rob Jones. I live at 1408 North Wicklow. So it seems like this could be something where you make a decision here in the next couple of weeks, it would be the end of something. And, you know, it could be a problem for us, but I'm telling you, you probably aren't ready for the problem. Because if you pass this, we will be all over you. We will be all over you, and you for leading it, whoever's going to put it in. We're going to be called all the time about the noise and the traffic and the drunks and endangerment to the kids.
Please address me, not staff.
And if you want to deal with that, then do. You know, you can make that choice. You can choose to carry that burden. Because it'll be a big one. Because these aren't just like, you know, young families and, you know, the people that are speaking here today, you know, they're established people of Nixa with tremendous investments, who make great decisions, who elect representatives, and they will hold you accountable to it. So it seems like we're begging you now, don't screw us, but don't screw yourselves either.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Evening, I'm Jim Meadows. I reside at 870 East Galway. That's the first house you see as you drive through the gates in Inneskary. Unlike most people that talk to you tonight, I'm not going to say that I've lived there forever. We moved in June 4th, and I'm the person who has just finally got grass growing, so I'm happy about that. From a personal perspective, I do think this is a bad idea for the area. When you look at a special use permit, it exists because certain uses put a greater burden on the community than your standard neighborhood commercial use. And unfortunately, a place that's main purpose is to serve cider, beer, alcohol, is going to put additional burdens. The special use permit process allows this council to put the kind of restrictions on that that protect the neighborhood and protect the community. I am not going to say that there is any ill intent on the behalf of the developers. I know some of the people involved in this project. I actually know and have known for 25 years or longer, Billy, Billy, who's the architect on this. They're good folks. They're going to try to do a nice project. But the nature of this project is one that is difficult. So I would encourage the council, for the reasons that are stated, to turn down the special use permit. But if you are going to grant it, please consider changing some of the restrictions that the city staff has recommended. We've heard from the testimony here and in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission that those restrictions just simply aren't far enough to deal with the special burdens that's put on it. I'm going to highlight a couple of those. The first one is the issue with parking. The city staff thought they were doing something wonderful by changing the parking requirement here and making it where they didn't have to have as much parking. I get why they thought that was a good idea. But when you look at the experience we've seen at 4x4, when you see in neighborhoods like Chesterfield Village and like Roundtree, that doesn't work out. We actually should have this project have the standard city requirements for parking. I think that's something that this council can do and should strongly consider. The second issue that is a big problem for the neighbors has to do with lights and noise and music outside. Now personally, I think in a neighborhood-type environment, having outdoor music and outdoor entertainment space creates a real problem for noise. I'd like the council to consider eliminating that, or if it's not willing to do so, think about restricting it more to more reasonable time periods during the weekdays. Obviously, on weekends, that's something that continue a little longer, but maybe look at a restriction as seven, eight o'clock. With a place that allows the consumption of alcoholic beverages, obviously, they're going to need an outdoor space because people like to smoke when they do that, and they can't smoke inside. So they're going to have to have that space, but consider restricting more how much the noise can be in that outside space and live music in that outside space during the weekdays. Finally, I think another thing that should be considered is this gives us a real opportunity to develop a plan, because people have been talking about increased traffic and increased DWI issues. I think that we need to look at and consider some types of restrictions that probably the developer would be fine to agree to that can assure people on that. What I mean by that is on certain busier weekends, maybe be required that there be onsite security to keep problems down. A lot of facilities do do that, and it does solve problems. And that would be a way to keep down problems that would be caused on a weekend by overconsumption of alcohol or too much noise. So those are just some of the things I would ask you to consider. Again, I think it would be better if we got some other use there, and that this is not what should be approved in a neighborhood. But, you know, it's your job to balance the interests of everyone in the city as well as the community. So I just ask you, in doing so, take some of the concerns that have been raised into consideration, and consider if you do wish to approve this, working with the developer and amending some of those to deal with some of the concerns. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Meadows. If anyone else would like to speak on this, feel free to do so at this time. No one else, I will now declare the public hearing closed. And just to give you guys an idea, and this will be read at the next council meeting, which is on the 26th, I believe. It will be voted on at that meeting. Please continue. Feel free. Email myself. I forward the emails on to the council. Whether you're against it, support it, you think of something, because I know how I am, I always speak, and then I'll think of something 30 minutes later that I should have said. Feel free, you know, shoot me an email. My cell phone number is even listed on the website. So if you need to talk about it, give me a call, email, anything. Keep that in mind for the next two weeks. Also, during the break, did find out we will be putting another speed radar up on Old Castle. Those kind of help because, one, they, people see them and slow down, but two, they also give us an idea if people are speeding, which we all know, I live over there, they speed, when it is, and then we can work with the major over there and get some additional enforcement. And usually people just seeing the officers slows them down. So we'll continue to work on that. And anytime you see it, don't be afraid. Shoot me a message. I mean, you can always call the PD, that's the fastest way, but if you see something consistent, shoot me a message anytime, we'll take care of it. And thank you all again. There's a lot of really, really good thoughts, really good feedback, and great input. We all greatly appreciate it. So thank you. Okay. Is there anything, any other comments or questions from the council? There's a lot to digest, so you've got two weeks.
I just want to say there was a lot of well-spoken people here, and there's an open District One seat. So you guys have plenty of opportunity to actually be part of the vote, so stay with it. This is a great city, and there is a city council, so not the threat, just come be a part of it. So thanks, everybody, for coming out.
Well said. All right. If nothing else, Ms. Coffey, could you please read Council Bill 2025-26? And feel free to pause for a moment. And actually, while we're waiting for a second, I would like to thank the police department. We had a, we did have an issue in Wicklow that I think a lot are aware of, and I was the first one to call it in. I might not have went through proper channels, mainly because I knew who was on duty, so had about four vehicles in the neighborhood looking for the individual within less than 90 seconds. Luckily, it ended the way it did, and it could have been a lot worse. So definitely appreciate everything you guys do and how quick you respond. And now, Mrs. Coffey, could you please read Council Bill 2025-26?
First reading Council Bill Number 2025-26. An ordinance of the council of the city of Nixa annexing approximately 4.29 acres of real property generally located along West Highway 14. Presenting is Planning and Development Director, Scott Gaby.
Mayor, council, good evening. Unlike the previous agenda item, this is something that staff did seek out with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Committee. If you're ever curious as to how those green Nixa signs with the population get placed where they do, this is that process. So the Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission has this process where communities can voluntarily request the annexation of their right-of-way. In this case, since we recently have placed a new Welcome to Nixa sign along West and East Highway 14, we are requesting that MoDOT grant us the annexation of their right-of-way. So that way, our the welcome sign is adjacent to the green Nixa sign. So that way, there's, it lines up, and there's no confusion or dispute as to where our city limits may or may not start. Through this process, we had to notify all communities within a five-mile radius of the right-of-way that we are requesting to annex. So we had to send letters to Clever, Highlandville, Fremont Hills, Ozark, Springfield, and of course, Christian County. Basically, the whole process that the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission is seeking is public input on this process. We didn't receive any negative feedback that all those communities were in favor of Nixa voluntarily annexing that piece of property. We also had to do additional public notification and notify all the neighbors, again, for additional period of time, again, in the whole effort to seek public input. And through that time, we only received one phone call from the property owner that currently owns the solar farm. That property owner did say that he was in favor of it. So not much will change, other than PD will have to perform or report to the crashes or any incidents that may occur at the intersection of 14 and Hazel Run. That's, you're welcome, Chad. But this agenda item was read to the Planning and Zoning Commission. I did jump the gun a little bit, so it was read back at the June 3 meeting. At that time, nobody approached the commission, and the commission did vote unanimously to recommend approval to Nixa City Council. Staff does recommend approval, again, as it will move the green Nixa sign roughly adjacent to the Welcome to Nixa sign. Staff recommends approval.
Do you know, since they will no longer be updating population on those city limit signs, do they plan on taking that part down?
I don't know if they plan to replace it with an all-new sign, or just move the current sign if this gets approved. That has not been discussed with our counterparts at MoDOT. This is a question I can ask them and report back to you at the second read.
I mean, it's not like time-sensitive or anything, just curiosity, because I've been asked a couple of times, so. Perfect. Any questions? About Cindy's sign.
Cindy's fault.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Gaby.
Thank you.
If there are no other questions, I will declare the public hearing open for Council Bill 2025-26. If anyone would like to speak on this, do so at this time. And I will declare the public hearing closed. Any further comments or questions from council?
Do we know when the lighting is going to be added to the sign?
Lighting? That one's lit. It's the other one that's not.
Thank you.
So to anyone who is watching online and heard the question and not the answer, because those microphones are not working tonight, hopefully have the power ran across Highway 14 soon by liberty, and then we can get hooked up and have some lights. Perfect, thank you. Any other questions? All right, no other questions. We'll move on to our last council bill. Mrs. Coffey, could you please read Council Bill 2025-27?
First reading Council Bill Number 2025-27. An ordinance of the council of the city of Nixa amending Chapter 2, Article 5, Section 2-162 and 2-164 of the Nixa City Code for the purpose of codifying changes to the Missouri Sunshine Law. Presenting is City Attorney Nick Woodman.
Good evening, mayor, members of council. We had a legislative session this year, and the General Assembly adopted House Bill 145, which was signed by the governor. This bill does a number of things, but for our purposes, it modifies certain provisions of the state's sunshine law, particularly regarding records requests. I've highlighted the changes in the staff memo that accompany the bill. The one I want to focus on, and the one that is the basis for the request to modify the city code, has to do with the addition of language to the state sunshine law, placing parameters on when the city can consider a records request abandoned. Before the implementation of House Bill 145, there was no standard on that. on that. Now, the legislature has provided that we can only consider a records request abandoned by the requester if we haven't heard from them within 90 days. So, there's a 90-day wait period for us to consider a records request closed for non-response. That period goes up to 150 days if the estimated fee for the records request is over $1,000. So, the code before you this evening would modify our, our city code section on records requests to reflect the state law changes. Because these changes are being implemented by a change in state law, staff is recommending approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions that I'm able to about this.
Any questions? Thank you very much, Mr. Woodman. If there are no other questions, I will now declare the public hearing open for Council Bill 2025-27. And I will now declare the public hearing closed. Any further comments or questions from council? Fair enough. All right. Moving on to the resolutions section. Mrs. Coffey, could you please read Resolution 2025-38?
Resolution number 2025-38, a resolution of the council of the city of NIXA granting a permit to NIXA Public Schools to authorize the display of fireworks for the 2025 high school football season. Presenting is Planning and Development Director Scott Gaby.
Mayor, council, good evening. This is pretty much an annual request from NIXA Public Schools to do fireworks display during their home football games. This year is slightly different. I mean, the, you have the dates in front of you. It's the same pyrotechnic company that they have used in the past. The big difference here is the construction and recent completion of the Apex Training Facility, their multi, new multipurpose training facility that is now at the same location as where these fireworks were previously shot off at or conducted their display. Because of the concern of the new facility, staff did consult with the manufacturer of the covering over that facility. I know, I don't know if you've seen it all, but it's, it's a different type of covering that's over it. So, we consulted with the manufacturer, we consulted with the construction crew that was constructing the facility, we consulted with the NIXA Fire Protection District, we consulted with our Chief Building Inspector, and then we also consulted with the National Fire Protection Association regulations concerning firework displays, and also the Code of State Regulations concerning public displays of fireworks. So, there's, there were a lot of regulations and, and legal stuff that was fun to read through. What we ended up doing was coming up with a compromise with NIXA Public Schools, because the, the NFPA, based off of the mortar size, which again, we were, pyrotechnic mentioned the gram size of the fireworks, the NFPA only mentions mortar size. So, we were referring to like the smallest mortar for a typical consumer-grade firework. That setback from structures was only 210 feet. Staff did not feel that that was adequate. Then, when we go to the Code of State Regulations, there's potential that we could have imposed a 600-foot setback from that facility due to it being associated with the school district. Again, we didn't feel like that was necessary either, so we kind of met in the middle at 350 feet away from the, the Apex Center. If you scroll down, there is a map. Again, I am, I like maps, so I make maps. So, what you're seeing is a 350-foot setback from the Apex Center, and then also a 300-foot setback from the fuel storage that is at the generator at the water tower. That is from state regulations, so that is required. Staff does feel that this is an appropriate distance away from the Apex facility. Now, there is, the, so the covering is flame retardant, but that doesn't mean if something hot were to land on it, that it could still melt through and cause issues with the structure. So, that is what we're trying to prevent. So, we feel like 350 feet is adequate for consumer-grade fireworks to be away from it. So, with that, again, we consulted with NIXA, NIXA Public School District on this issue, and they have agreed to these setbacks. Staff does recommend approval.
Any questions?
Do you know if there were any other requirements as far as insurance? Was it greater, or did it have any impact on that? Not in the state regulations, but the NIXA Public Schools does require the pyrotechnic to carry a $3 million liability, $3 million liability insurance as part of their requirements.
And you said the yellow dot is where they would be shooting those off at from?
Correct. Yeah, that is the reference as to where the display site can be.
And now, the school's okay with this because it's going to just be a very short fireworks thing, not like the big 4th of July thing, right?
Correct, yeah. These should just be your typical consumer-grade, not a, a big professional-grade fireworks display.
I was curious, because I know the, one of the things about the fireworks being canceled this year was because the amount, and they were concerned about that building. So, if this is just a small thing with a touchdown, that's not a big deal, I guess.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Based off what I'm hearing about the football team, there's going to be a lot of fireworks.
I hear them at my house, believe me.
Yep.
Were there any mentions of like weather's or shut, weather shutting it down, or any kind of storms or thing? I know that they're going to play football throughout whatever, if the wind's pushing up from the, from the south, I'm sure the, the insurance or the pyrotechnic guys would make that call, but I didn't know if we should.
Correct.
Outlie that, that, or if the school would do that, or?
Um, they still.
I don't know what, what liability we have with letting them shoot it off no matter what.
So, they're still subject to, like, if there's any burn restrictions in place or something, they're, they're still are not allowed to set off the fireworks, and then yeah, if there's a high-wind situation, it is not advised to shoot off fireworks, especially if the wind is blowing in that direction?
Yeah, every, every game is treated separately, and there's a go-ahead from the fire department and, and the city, really, on if they can do it or not. So, there has been some in the past that we had, there was one that said no, and then all of a sudden, the wind died down, and then it was okay. But, but no, they definitely, and they always, they always check with the fire department and us before, before doing it, so. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Gaby.
Thank you.
No further questions. I will now declare the public hearing open for Resolution 2025-38. And I will now declare the public hearing closed. Any further comments or questions from the council? Nothing further. I will accept a motion for Resolution 2025-38.
So made.
Second.
First by Mr. Lucas, a second by Mrs. Morris. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. All right. One thing I wanted to add, just thank you to everyone who helped out, was involved in National Night Out. It was a blast. Was very cool being able to give Brent Forgy his own day. I think he kind of liked that. And thank you to Matt and everything you guys did to get that ready and accommodating my needs. Because I can be, I can be picky at times, so. No, I thought it went great. There was a huge turnout. I don't know how many, actually, Mr. Larson might be able to tell you. How many hot dogs did you guys cook? Three? That's a lot.
324?
It's good it was really cool outside that day, though, so you weren't too hot by the grill. Now, we appreciate you guys for helping out.
He said he lost four pounds that day.
I bet.
Had to keep him warm somehow.
But no, it was, it was great. It was great having everyone there, county, NIXA, everyone. It was awesome. Anything else from staff? Let you guys go first.
Yes, Mayor, council.
You've been waiting to talk all day.
All, all night. Wanted to get my turn in. Just wanted to remind you, as we go into back-to-school next week, that the aquatics hours at the pool do change. And so, beginning Tuesday, the first day of school, the pool will open from 10 to 11:15 in the morning for lap swim and splash time, and then is only open on Saturdays and Sundays for general swim. So, noon to 8 on Saturday, noon to 6 on Sundays through Labor Day. And so, then Labor Day, Monday, we've got some special hours. I'll remind you of those as we get closer to that at our next council meeting. I just wanted to give you guys that heads-up. And then our next movie's in the park, sponsored by the Massengill Group, is on August 30th, and it's the Paw Patrol movie. So, come join us.
Paw Patrol. Awesome. And speaking of back-to-school, Major Tenet's, I bet you have something for us. Maybe?
First thing I want to say is I want to learn how to use this microphone. Can you hear me all right? Second thing is Brent Forgy would like t-shirts made.
Okay. I'm down.
I'd buy one.
Yeah.
He was very excited about that. That was one of the first things, I wasn't there, but that was one of the first things he brought up. He was very cool. So, but we wanted to mention that the police department's been working in conjunction with NIXA Public Schools, the NIXA School Police, the school communications, and the NIXA communications on a stop, stop-arm violation and social media enforcement campaign for some time, tentatively set for September 2nd through the 15th. In addition to back-to-school safety messaging and education, our enforcement campaign may include placing officers in school buses to identify violations and the relaying of information to other officers or units for traffic stops, as well as strategically placing officers in known problem areas to address violations in real time. As always, we encourage our bus drivers and citizens to continue to contact us with any information they have, reference to these violations as we start a new school year. And I would also like to extend our thanks to the NIXA Public Schools for their effort, as the video they created for this project is great. Another thing that I noticed, as you've mentioned, setting out some signs and things of that nature, we're trying to coordinate that with the Streets Department, just to kind of help our enforcement efforts as school begins.
And the Streets Department have been painting crosswalks on all the drives, which is pretty nice to have.
Yeah, that's great. Anything we can do, we're going to try to be really visible in school zones and areas of that things, because a lot of people forget the school's coming back along, and they've been driving probably recklessly and dangerously through those schools.
Great. I appreciate all the additional efforts. That actually brought up a conversation that Mr. Lucas and I had earlier. Got to talking about when we did, I want to say it was, it was before he was on council, so it might have been like 18 or 19, 20, somewhere around there, and we did the Obey the Sign or Pay the Fine campaign. Wouldn't mind looking into doing that again. I think education in some instances, you know, on higher-speed roads that aren't in residential areas is, is good, but people that are willing to drive 55 in a 25 residential zone, I feel like they deserve a ticket. And, not that you guys would give a warning for that, but you get what I'm saying. So, maybe, once this whole program that you guys are doing with the schools kind of wraps up a little bit, we can look at doing another one of those, and I'm sure, I'm sure our communications department will make a killer video, because they always do. If you haven't seen the one they did today, check it out. It was really cool. So, but we'll, we'll, we'll bring that up after the fact, and looking forward to hearing how, how this back-to-school thing goes. That's, I like all the additional effort. That's awesome.
Yep. I was going to segue that right into, after this, let's do that.
Sorry, I stole your thunder.
That's okay. It's your thunder. I was just going to reiterate.
Anything else from staff? Anything else from council?
I was going to do it.
All right. Well, I appreciate all of you for your hard work, and, you know, sometimes we have long nights, sometimes we have 15-minute meetings. So, I appreciate everyone hanging around and, and listening to the citizens, and hope you guys have a great week. Meeting adjourned.